And thank you for being flexible, for whatever reason, last Tuesday or a week ago, Tuesday was challenging for everyone. So it's nice to, thanks for giving, getting space on your calendar to get back in on track. We've got, I know, let's see. Do we need to think?
You're gonna push that, Lou, got it?
Okay, so we're officially called to order and let's start with the land acknowledgement. Does anybody have that up in front and want to read it?
Okay, read it. Okay, thank you. We'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. In doing so, we aim to eliminate the longer history of this land we call home, a relationship to its history, and the heritage of those peoples and the search lived here before the European-American revolutions that began in the British.
I'm excited to hear this is an aside that I guess the work for the Maricopa Park is actually moving forward with some conversation with Dennis Spokes, sorry? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Apparently my. Was it effective? Okay.
Not that I know of.
I thought I heard that there's a separate conversation. Okay, is there any discussion on the agenda? No? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Great, that passes. How about meeting minutes? We'll just hop on over to that. Could somebody bring it to the table and then we'll talk about any changes? Do we get a motion on that?
To bring the meeting then.
Can we stay like that or do we have to say to approve?
That's fine.
Either one?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. The second?
Thank you.
All right, any, did everybody have a chance to review it? Review them? Any, any comments, discussion, changes?
Can I just submit some typos?
Sure, is that fine? They don't have to be dumb.
As long as they're not substantive.
Oh, no. You want her, me right now?
No.
Okay, yeah, I could just give it to you.
Okay.
Oh, wait. Can you mark? Actually, pass it to me after I can incorporate some of the ones I have. Yeah. Oh, oh, you've already done it, okay. Um, I did want to note just for everybody, or also from my own knowledge, under staff and others present, we didn't include, we didn't include Sarah Phillips. Do we need to, since she was an official guest?
Yeah, let's see, let's, um.
Hey, yeah, I thought we should do that and I apologize if she wasn't on here. It's, I will put her on.
Totally fine.
So we have to, a new motion, there's that one, another amendment. So just, you just need to accept it as a friendly amendment.
Right now, oh, uh, the only other change, let me see if I want to bring it up. Oh. On page four, line 47, it's just Chair Larson commented on F and stated that it may be good to provide information sheets, et cetera. And that was Commissioner, who knows, recommendation that we produce, that kind of thing. We had some discussion, but I didn't know if it mattered. Does it matter? But it's attributed to me versus him?
We'd choose, so, international, what's that, so first?
Row forty-seven, yeah, it's just instead of Chair Larson commented, it was Commissioner, I had recommended that, yeah, he told me that they were. Um, okay, so, can I ask Commissioner Rose if he would accept those two amendments? Or do we need a?
Also, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Moving right along. Uh, I think that brings us to. That brings us to next meeting date, September 13th. Does anybody know of conflicts they have right away, right off the bat?
I'm seventy-five percent likely to be here. We're first gonna be missing.
Okay, well, as per usual, please let Steve know to make sure we have it formed. And then citizen comments, do we have anybody in them?
We do. Nobody's attending online.
Okay, very cool. And nobody's in there, all right. Well, then, moving right along. It's all you.
Uh, there isn't much to say. I've been telling the council that the sign code, recommendations are gonna come forward any day for a little while. So, uh, what, once, uh, I don't know, Steve, I don't think there's been any plan to put it on the agenda yet, but I assume that some representatives will want to present it and explain the work that was done along with Steve. So, um, uh, I imagine that if you make a decision today, we will look at places on the calendar and see where. So, um, and, we will, you know, it's the kind of thing we'll have to have a public hearing on it, so anyway, so, uh, there'll be an opportunity for additional public comment. Other than that, there isn't much, we're working, we're starting work on the budget. Um, and so the budget for the upcoming year is gonna be front and center. Um, I, at the council work session on Monday, I'm gonna be talking about setting up a procedure so people could petition for residential parking zones. It's just the procedure, not the establishment of residential parking zones, but between the park and sound transit. Uh, moving ahead with these giant bus stops that presumably people could use someday. Uh, it, it's basically a petition process where, uh, you know, a high percentage of the neighbors would have to petition to create a residential parking zone. So it's just so we have a procedure and we're not flat for this. So I'm gonna be presenting the concept to the council on Monday. And, uh, you know, lots of cities have done it. There's a lot of resources and other cities were to come up with. The biggest issue is really cost of enforcement, cost of having a permit program and so forth. So, uh, stay tuned for more on that. But, uh, I think that enough council members are interested in that, that we're going to continue our conversation.
Any questions on any of that?
So the residential parking zones, is that something where if you lived in the area, then you'd have to get a permit for your car for the day?
Yeah, yeah, so then you could park for, say, more than two hours or whatever it is. It's quite flexible. You can kind of set it up for all the time. You can set it up for part of the time. You know, I think it might be different if you're talking about a bus stop that gets usage during peak times versus the waterfront park. So, uh, and then, you know, the question that's already composed to me is if you, if you park illegally, is it a code violation or is it a law violation? So there are gonna be some interesting questions because we've not, other cities have done this, but we've not done this before. So I just want to make sure we have procedures that have been adopted. So if no one made petition, we may have no residential park. So I just want to make sure we get ahead of it and we have a procedure so that if we want to move ahead with something like that, there's an established process. And sound transit is still moving ahead. Um, it is, I hear from some of the neighbors, especially on the uphill side of, um, Baca Way, who's big chunks of their yards are being affected, uh, tree removal is nature. Um, there's gonna be a large retaining wall on the uphill side. And there's concern about sound grouping, aesthetics, uh, you know, and also a lot of the trees provide screening for the, for folks. So they're not only gonna lose part of their yards, but they're gonna lose some of their screening. So that's, uh, sound transit is basically negotiating with people one-on-one. So it's, it's kind of, um, unless someone reaches out to a council member, it's kind of hidden from view of them, so.
Is there still a legal battle with?
No, they, they did sue us originally over our town center code, some town center code provisions and our parking for us design, uh, requirements, which were developed with, uh, at least you two and Maddie. Um, so, and, and see that their preference is to build a concrete box and you look. Don't, don't say that in the notes. If you look at one forty-fifth, um, and we have a lot more design requirements, so they sued over, um, some aspects of the town center code, but mostly over the parking garage code. Some of the things they didn't want to do just kind of blew us away. They hired two big law firms and we had to pay our lawyers extra money to represent us. But then, when they started to have budget problems, they decided that they would postpone our parking garage till 2044, which is kind of like never, right? So, um, so they dropped their lawsuit at that point. So our code went into effect as recommended by the planning commission with just a few changes from the council. And it's in place right now. So that was quite an accomplishment for our city because I think we're, we're kind of covered for the next ten to fifteen years by that point. So. But yeah, they're, they don't care about, they're, they're not that. They don't, um, they don't worry about what, what it's part.
So if this is not going in until 2044, how does that affect the town center redevelopment? Because I know that's sort of on hold as well.
Yeah, there are no proposals for town center redevelopment. At one point, Marloni Guyer, the owner, wanted to subdivide the parcels in the town center, but that never went forward. Right, so I personally think the city should buy where the professional building is and that will give them some extra parking too for the park and stuff. But, you know, there are no resources for that, but that's fine. If you ask me what my wish list is, I think we should buy that part of the lot. Um, Marlon Guyer supposedly has the property on the market, but, um, general feedback I've gotten is that the price is high for,
for. So they're bailing, they're not even interested anymore.
They're not planning to do any, um, anything right now. Um, we haven't heard of anything at all, even to spin things up a little bit. So I know friends of Third Place Commons, you know, one of the issues is things are getting kind of shabby, but they don't own that space, right? So it's kind of a delicate situation. So, so in the sense that we don't have any bad development proposals, it's good. And actually, town center is pretty heavily used right now. I mean, if you, even when I'm not there myself, when I drive by and I look at helpful parking lots are, it's a lot of heavy usage right now. That is a long answer.
Thank you.
Great place on holiday. Take summer off, go visit family, really.
Yeah, it's true.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. I have to leave, I apologize, I have to leave at eight, um, for a family thing, but, uh, I will be here on the thirteenth.
Actually, I do have a question. Are there, um, are you finding there are a lot of grant monies out there for some of the projects, uh, the parks?
There are more grant monies than there were, um, pre-pandemic, in part because there was so much money that came in with the pandemic and city and state revenues didn't decline that much. So, uh, so yes, we have gotten, we have gotten a grant, but we don't have the money yet to do park planning, including waterfront park planning. So we hope, you know, it's a long process to work with the county, um, over getting to get money actually in your hands. But we hope to, um, start the park planning process in early 2023.
What I recall, you saying there was a small grant to get it going.
Well, it isn't an implementation grant, it's a planning grant. So it will be used for two things, uh, to put together an actual master plan for all of our parks. Um, so, and the Parks Board will be working on this, um, to put together a master plan for all the parks. We have the post plan, but it's kind of a, what are the projects we'd like to see kind of plan? And it's a little bit old compared to where it is right now. So I think the master plan will be, you know, kind of phased, depending on how much money we have, right? Uh, and then do, developing a specific master plan for the lakefront park. And then I think we will scrounge around for, um, scrounge around. We will creatively seek out grants to, um, implement, um, our, our plan. I think we have to be very aware of, um, neighborhood impacts, security, noise. And so I suspect our, our park will be more modest than Long Bloom Park, which has got updated. If you've gone by, it's really quite lovely. You know, they, they created a lot more space by clearing out black areas than I realized was there. You mentioned budgets in November, November seventeenth, I think, is the adoption date. It's possible it could slip a little bit past that, but we have to have, uh, we have to have information to accounting or some governmental entity of our budget by early December. So it's very involved that this group has. I did, um, you can, I will try to give you an update on what's in the budget for that relates to, you know, planning, the planning department and any kind of plan. And so I'll try to do that. There is also a public hearing on the proposed budget. So the first step is we get the mayor's proposed budget, which we haven't seen yet, the first week in September. And then there are council deliberations followed by a public hearing that is, I don't know the exact date, but, um, there's calendar on the city website. And then it's proposed for adoption by the council November seventeenth. But, but that, that can always slip if there are unresolved issues. Um, it's going to be a challenging budget because, um, everything that we do, all the park maintenance, all the, you know, services that we acquire, even salaries and consultant services, things like that, everything's up at least ten percent, you know? So, uh, and, and we don't have a budget that increases our annual budget revenue increases less than inflation usually. So we're usually kind of behind, so it's gonna be, gonna be challenging to have some discussions.
Well, thank you. I remember teaching. Well then, let's move on to our next, um, agenda item of business. We will, uh, finally, finally, I think, be ready to send the sign for revision work over to the council. We just have one last thing to do, and that is, did everybody have a chance to read the memo that, was passed around? Were there any additions or changes to that that you felt were necessary? Any messaging you want to send to council that wasn't reflected in that? Just another typo, but I know I can. Additional, on the last line, instead of addition backroom. Did you get that, Nick? Additional versus?
Okay.
Thanks. Uh, can we just throw it? Are you guys looking for it?
I was looking to see if it's in there.
And it's in the past. Okay, do you want to throw it up really quick? It's very short, okay. And I would invite you to comment to council member Bodhi if you could see anything that, you know, you think.
No, I read it previously and it seemed to capture the, as, yeah, we're heard.
It was a word document.
Oh, yeah.
No, it was a word document.
Well, it was a word now, now.
Oh, you've incorporated this, I said.
It's not.
Yes. That's great, okay. Um, the one thing I wonder is, I mean, I don't know, council member Bodhi, would it be helpful in this memo if we reference the sections as, you know, sort of the way the language currently reads for the, temporary signage and then the way, you know, how that would affect banners and then also the animated signs? Would it be helpful to see the excerpt of that or will you be tackling the whole body and?
I think we'll be looking at the whole thing.
Okay.
So, um, but if there's a presentation pointing out where people could find that.
Yeah.
I think would be, would be good, but I don't think you need to change the.
Okay, mom. Uh, or maybe just in parentheses, uh, reference the, the section, for sure, that it's, you know, yeah, for the temporary signage and for the, um, animated.
I thought they were good comments.
Yeah, I agree. Well, if there's no discussion, can we just approve it and move on? Or do you have any comments or?
Really, uh, simple for your approval.
I think we.
We got one, one minor change, so.
You should. Okay. Do you want to? Sorry. I moved to approve the, uh, the draft, the letter to the council regarding the sign code. Any discussion? All those in favor of amending or of, of the memo as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Excellent, all right, we're done. Wouldn't that be amazing? Like, check.
I know, because everyone was asking. Yeah. And it was more complicated than we all thought.
And I know Kim is not with us, but I mean, thanks to staff and, you know, Kim's legal input, helping us understand, you know, how this change is really, you know, what they were rooted in, so. Okay, well, that takes us into the reasonably used exception work. And the best I could distill is, there, uh, so, so Steve put together a, a, a letter for us that just sort of, it offered some code language, which can help us unpack some questions I had posed. But I also went through our minutes and my notes from last time and didn't want to lose the things that we discussed because for me, they make up a list of things that we were talking about, um, potentially modifying or considering for modification in our current codes. And I think that the information that Steve's been around on current code language will help seed that conversation. But I'd like to be able to, um, just quickly summarize for you what I could, uh, from our last month's meeting. Uh, we had talked about monitoring periods, length and scopes. There was some conversation of is there a longer period of time beyond five years? Um, we also talked about conservation easements, that was two. Three was project size, which reasonable and in particular, or particular, we talked about footprint. We understood that the hearing examiner usually considers a twelve hundred as sort of a minimum and it can be bigger based on, uh, none of our factors. We also, um, talked about, uh, having R U E somehow associated with the title or the deed so that that was clearly, the, the new owner clearly understood when restrictions on the property they were purchasing. And then we talked about fines. Um, so those five things, I just didn't want to lose sight of. And if, unless somebody has a better idea, I thought we could just pick those up with the goal of not spending, you know, a lot of time chewing on it, but just finding out if there was anything there, you know, is, do we want to explore either through Steve or through Kim or attorney Pratt, a possibility for affecting any one of those topics? So if that is okay with you, we could just. Is that, is something, okay. All right, so let's go back to monitoring periods. Now that you've had a month to think about it, is that something that collectively we would like to try to advance in our recommendations, extending monitoring periods? Um, or you noticed one of my questions was monitoring scope requiring maybe water testing as explicit? And let me ask you clarifying questions, Steve. The only time an R U E is actually triggered is the site is completely encumbered, correct? Otherwise, it falls, okay. So we're talking about sites that, it may be a site that doesn't have water on it fast, right? If it's totally covered by slope, it might not.
See, so, um, it wouldn't, you know, there wouldn't be any issues related to that. Barely, it's just one thing.
Right. So basically, to this question, I think we have two things to decide. Do we want to potentially recommend a longer monitoring period? And do we want to, uh, explicitly expand the scope of what is being monitored?
If, if we monitor, not everything designed always works out perfectly. I mean, so, so we've got this grand design that's a piece of property that's supposed to work, just like the B needs. And we monitor for a year and it seems to be doing okay or not doing okay. Now the poor person's got some problems because things aren't working out as designed. Could just be a, a way that you're bad design or bad luck or watering more, whatever it has to be, I mean. Is there an out for people when something doesn't work out as planned and it's no fault of what's going on here?
Well, do you understand, I don't know if everybody understands how the monitoring program works, but, uh, generally we'll just say it's for five years. And that's a typical thing, right? And, uh, so the, the, um, the applicants, uh, or the permatees, uh, consultant submits a report every year saying it's working or it's not working. Uh, and, um, so, uh, if it isn't working, um, given authority by, you know, one of the regulations I put into its memo to extend the vote, so I've done that in the past. And, and like King County had a situation that wasn't working and they indicated, they, they were persuasive, like in year six or seven, that there are extenuating circumstances where this is never gonna get any better. Uh, so in consultation with, uh, you know, our, 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 who was, like, um, you know, actually going to site into the site, so we decided to, you know, that they've done probably the best they could do. So we have that authority.
Okay.
Um, and so, you know, the, there, there's, there's some ambiguity in the code just because, you know, maybe it doesn't say it has to be five years or it couldn't be up to ten years. Uh, it depends on the situation. So what happened is the, the applicant's, um, uh, consultant or their, their expert say, we recommend this. And so then we get the opportunity to hire our own, uh, you know, peer review person, say, well, you know, that, that seems fine. Or actually, it'd be better if we did it for longer because X, Y, and Z. So the, the, the rest of the critical areas, regulations outside of, um, the, uh, this piece we're looking at, section two fifty, actually. Yeah.
Thank you. Well, let's see, pull that up, just as a reminder, we're just looking for where language seems to, if, if we can improve the language, if it's working fine, that's an okay way to put this issue to rest.
So it was under your question for, I think, uh, the language for monitoring mitigation, uh, that's in the same chapter, critical areas. And so, you know, talks about that the director can acquire mitigation and that, uh, the critical impacts should be protected in accordance with, uh, mitigation of it, so we definitely, in accordance with the plan, that's what the consultant created and we'd have somebody review it if we had any concerns about it all. The guess you mentioned, um, so then it gives, it gives the contents of that plan, what should be in it. Uh, contingency plan, that kind of gets into the situation where things aren't working. Uh, maybe recommend that it be a couple more years longer. And then this is where we get the idea of a written contract with a professional, uh, who is gonna conduct the, um, the, uh, the annual monitoring. So, and then what I highlighted, there's the, whenever the planning director becomes a monitoring, uh, has established a significant adversity. has established a significant adverse deviation, predicted impacts, but that monitor makes plan has failed, the applicant or property owner shall be required to instant corrective action and so also we should prefer the monitoring as provided in the section. So this is, this is pertaining to reasonable use as well as the other kind of critical area that limits the issue. It's just one type of critical area has to go through.
Ira, does that answer your question?
Yes. And then just, just a follow up to that. Is this? I mean, this wouldn't be need because if I'm going to go to this, my death, I'm going to keep my house, but things happen. Does this go along with a piece of property if somebody sold that monitoring period? I mean.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's one of the things that you're, one of your suggested amendments is going to help with. Okay. You know, you're going to tell the hearing examiner, he must see evidence that, you know, financial set aside was being established. And so that would, you know, the, the applicant, if they sold the property, would have to make arrangements to take care of that. Or they would just continue to pay for it.
So, but the new owner somewhere, there's got to be aware that there's a agreement.
Yeah, there's a agreement that, and that's.
It's one of the things that we'll look at separately, but so assuming that we, assuming that we do make recommendations for a escrow account with contingency funds and assuming we would agree that we want this as part of a deed, you know, that it had a disclosure. Does, is this sufficient, do you think, for property owner and city, you know, to, to take care of what you described, like unanticipated outcomes? Yeah. All right. Does anybody else have any comment on monitoring length and scope? We, we brought that up, but it was brought up, I don't write down between at our last meeting. And I just want to make sure that whoever has strong feelings about that has a chance to describe that or make a recommendation. Can I just, I had a question about that, the qualified professionals, that's the original specialist that came up with the, the study or how, who was the qualified professional that the city hires or?
First you have one that's hired by the applicant. Qualified professionals, they have to be this criteria.
Right, which.
Which, you know, so we'll, we'll make sure that they put in a credentials and report. And then we are not going to hire somebody to review it. It isn't qualified. I think that applies to the city as well.
But the monitoring part, because I imagine there's a cost associated with, you know, somebody has to go out all the time to check in. Yeah, so.
Well, we, we, you know, there's, what we're doing is, is we're having the applicant set up this program. Right? And so if they, if they're, they're professional, they're they're, they're experts, qualified professionals, said finds things are okay. We're not going to go out there slightly, get a report, it's got pictures in it, says, I mean, this person's, you know, reputation, the online, if they, you know, falsify this. And if they do, then the city could say, wait a minute, you know, we have a bad experience with them. Person actually likes to look for another one. And so, so, but the report comes back and says, hey, you know, there are all these plants that died that were planted last year. And so, so we'll get into the app and say, hey, this, this doesn't, you know, look like you're really, the plans are important. And so that's kind of system. So we're not going out, we don't have the staff to monitor every day. We wait for these annual reports. And when we get them, that's when we focus on that particular property.
And I will come out of the escrow, that, that's where I was just.
Right, that's, I mean, that's just set aside until the monitoring is done. And then assuming that gets done appropriately, we release that one. It's not that we're drawing from that one. It's like, if everything goes haywire, we are naming the account and we can say, well, we're, we're taking that money and paying for what you should have paid for.
And so if the new owners come in, then who would pay for the qualified professional to come out and continue that monitoring? Would it be the original?
We, we would, you know, the, the original owner would be incentivized to make them set something up. So we don't hear from them. They can't close that account without our permission. So it's like in the case of the crane, the tree susceptible use over on 178. Yeah, it's, it's still, the developer still has the the, the bank account that we're reporting to for like $60,000, but somebody else lives in the house. We don't care. We've still got our $60,000 deposit on, on if things go wrong with those trees.
Presumably there's an arrangement between the builder and the property owner about this.
And that's not our problem.
It's not our problem. It's hard to say.
And I'm wondering, is it going to be built in such that the, as part of that mitigation plan, we always have the applicant paid prepaid for the monitoring person or quality person.
Right. That's what your H suggestion here improves on. It makes sure we have staff members and the Harry's owner strapple with that. Like, what do we set up? We can't give you this approval that you guys will set up. You can't even take a period until we know how you're going to do this. And we certainly can't find a longer permit until it's all set up.
So in the case of like, if the property owner sold it or just wasn't maintained or the escrow allows us to go in and do that, it's, but they're still required to do it. They get that money back if they've done.
Sure, yeah, it's all.
Sorry, does this apply just to reasonable use exceptions or is this in all elements of?
As far as financial guarantee?
Well, yeah, we're done. If we're talking about monitoring my life, like, is it just reasonable use? Or are we, or is this going into a portion of code that would affect anything to do with sensitive areas? Sorry, I get confused because it's.
No, that's, that's a good question. Just because the, the, the recommendation you currently have on in your draft is just applying to reasonable use.
Okay.
As I was quoting, there, there, there's a provision that says that even, even if it isn't reasonable use, we need to see a copy of the contract. So, you know, that's, if you think about the average person, you've got to put the major critical area comment because they want to do this or that. Making them take out a bond might, might be.
Okay, that's what I wanted to. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, so length of time, do we feel like the five years that is currently used as a benchmark is sufficient?
Well, my reading is no shorter than five years, right? So it can't be extended.
Although it's not currently, it's not necessarily five years for all. Is that right?
So I was looking at under question four, number three on page four. It says, almost ends at the end of that. Have been met as termed by the planning director, but no less than five years.
Yeah, I forgot to listen to it, but so you're right. That's, that's why we're always talking about five years.
Personally, I think five years.
All right. And then what about scope? And I'll, I'll say I brought that up about the water quality because it wasn't explicitly part of the list of things and it seems that that is an important aspect, you know, when our neighbor, Julie, Jane came forward, there's water, it's placed heavily on that property. And as we all know, we've got water all over Lake Forest Park. And so would that be important? Because it was something that she had expressed as the long term, or the stewardship foundation have expressed as a long-term concern is that ongoing water quality when you have a home that's built that close to a significant waterway. So would, would we want water, would we want to recommend that monitoring water is part of any plan that, any, any property that's completely encumbered has water on it?
Can you clarify?
Yeah, I mean, so I think, and I think Steve, you can chime in, but I think right now Steve has the latitude to ask for everything that's listed that would be part of a mitigation plan and can ask for other things as is warranted, right? Or he has discretion to ask for more. My wondering is, should water mitigation and monitoring happen, well, not mitigation, because that would presumably be part of the plan. Should water be one of the things that's monitored on sites that have water?
Sorry, I guess, can you clarify the water quality, the concern is, is it the like? So drainage, okay. And is that not included in the building permitting process?
Yeah. They'll have to, you know, put together a drainage plan. So it's sort of like, the hearing examiner, you know, usually would not get involved in, in the water quality issue unless there, there are, you know, it's like right up against a stream or right against a river. In this case, one gentleman James talking about it is. So, you know, that, that might be something when it does go, that one does go to hearing that we want to talk about in detail. But then there are other ones that are just on a steep slope. So, you know, that you're holding them to a standard that you were, you, you had when you were thinking about one that's right up, right beside a creek. I, I think, you know, I think the discretion of the planning director works to, to give you the ability to establish significant adverse deviations and, you know, what, what are the impacts? And so you're, you're relying on the, the professionals and cities peer review to say, these are the likely impacts. So in, in the case of the Gary project, it may be that, you know, they need a special drainage plan. And maybe they need to monitor what's going on with that to make sure that the, it actually got approved that it wasn't going to deteriorate. It's not much buffer. So it's a legitimate concern in this case, it just, you know, 10 years from now, you're still dealing with another, whatever, half dozen, you know, a dozen reasonable uses go through. They may all be related to sea slopes. Because a lot of the, a lot of lands west, a lot of lands deep and depending on where you find the spot in the property, it says water quality might not be an issue because you're 150 feet from that body of water. And you have a drain.
No, I personally, I guess I was misunderstanding water quality. I thought like maybe using pesticides or something else.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, that's how I had interpreted water quality. I think drainage is huge in Lake Forest Park.
Well, and I think for Julie Jane, that was one of the issues because of worry about undermining the slope, so water flow in that case. But I would presume that would come out as part of the, the mitigation plan to begin with. So I, I was assuming drainage is tackled during the mitigation planning. But in monitoring, just channeling, something I heard, someone from the stewardship foundation met is that ongoing, the water quality that might have, that was something flat off. And so my thought was, it's just like where surface water is present, water monitoring would be required. If it's not, if surface water isn't present, then we wouldn't require it. So. You know, you may have that discretion and a future planner might not, right? So I'm just thinking about it as we know it's a concern in our community that a water quality based on that often. So it seems like that.
Well, I guess, what do you mean by that? I mean, it's in the code. It's not related to me. It's the planning director.
This is right, the planning director can determine these things. And I don't, I can't recall, but I thought there was a place that listed some of the things that were part of a monitoring report.
Yeah, it says right above that. Up here. Here's what's supposed to be in a, the applicant should submit a monitoring maintenance program there by all the professional goals, objectives, criteria for assessing mitigation, monitoring plan includes in the site visits. Then a contingency plan, something goes wrong, similarly, you know, what's what would be backup? And then the contract, so.
So this refers just generally to whatever the mitigation plan is. And so I don't know where I read it, but something about a mitigation plan would include these elements and I don't recall seeing water quality as one of the items that were part of a mitigation plan. And, and so we can table this for now, but it stood out for me that when I was reading what was required. That was, notice absent.
General concern about suggesting something like that in short here, the first part, because what that actually means is not going to be able to define. And particularly if you're talking about, you know, fresh water stream or something with so many upstream impacts, I mean, other ways of affecting it. I think it would get to a really, really, effectively, I think it would be unenforceable and the city would end up spending money trying to enforce something with no actual reasonable determination.
Because what you're monitoring at the site is not necessarily what's going on.
What's happening.
Over the water on you. So it's like.
About erosion. And like testing water quality, you know what I mean? I think back to the issue of drainage. It might be more about erosion effects on water quality. So rather than water quality itself, because of that very issue.
Just, yeah, that's a fair point. Yeah. No, that's a fair point. I, I was just looking for and I apologize for not doing my homework. It may have been in, in a different section. But I just remember thinking it was conspicuous that water wasn't mentioned. So I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at that again unless you already know.
Maybe in the context of sensitive areas and Lake Forest Park, there's steep slopes and basically creeks. I mean, it's essentially revolving around drainage. And I think it's kind of, it'd be built into kind of the building the planning process, which is the drainage. At some point, we'll be looking at the drainage in a critical area. It'll still have to be critical area guidelines, if that's correct. So that it'll be drainage will be considered with that capacity is my assumption of the building permitting process.
Well, I would be okay, like, since I was the one that brought that up, if, if, if we're done, we're fine with the length and the scope of monitoring periods and we can move on to the next. Okay, well, the next thing that was brought up at our last meeting were conservation easements. And we can somehow require those for making a recommendation to require them. And so that wasn't my idea. I don't know if anyone wants to pick that up and make a case for or against it. Thanks, Lina.
Yeah, I, I could go through the conversation because the, the code requires that where, wherever, you know, the, the footprint that's approved isn't that, that those areas that are buffers and critical areas be in a critical areas track. And, and so that sort of wired that if you reported with the property where the boundary of that track is, and so you see when we look at those that you have this outline of where the billable areas and everything around it, it's all track day or strike day and track day. And so, so that, that establishes some limitations that do run with the property. What we can improve upon is saying, no, you can't do this. Code doesn't really say, you know, specifically, you know, what the, what you report should say in, in the, you know, when, when somebody looks at this property, they're considering buying, it just says critical areas track. Doesn't say, shall I do this, shall I do that? And so I think some jurisdictions have a little bit better language that they, we could probably in that area say, you know, this, this area has to be continuously maintained and natural state. And it's kind of like, they'll call it a native vegetation track, which is, we can use. And so we could improve on the language of what somebody's looking at when they say, when they're thinking about buying this property.
Does it prevent, or does it have any kind of? Does it prevent subdivision of, say, a large piece of land in, in a conservation?
Yeah, and we can't subdivide a particular area. It hasn't been turned into a trap. And so it does prevent that because, you know, it's, it's basically, you know, theoretically, it's calculated to say, you know, we retired from areas. You know, we don't believe in it anymore. And so you no longer have to, you know, adhere to whatever was adopted prior to 2022. 2050, so it never happened. But, but, you know, so, so what's the, I think the question really, what's the difference between this critical areas track and conservation? And so my understanding of conservation is that you're going to stipulate that, you know, who's, who's got the the requirement or duty to do X, Y and Z on that property, who's got certain rights to do other things in that property? And I always think of, you know, I think it's been out to Winthrop and Cross溪溪溪, all these trails go through all these private properties. And so there are. And so there are all sorts of conservation easements out there that allow the the metal nonprofit that maintains these trails to do that, they can they grew the trails and they can go back in in summer and fix them up and and use them in the summer for bike trails. But so they're given that right, and then they have some responsibilities that you shall not allow this to happen. So so, you know, we sit, the purpose of the city, the critical areas track covers what we want to cover. You know, it says that this this land is not to be developed. And and, you know, and essentially, the critical, you know, we're given the ability to 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 mon- to monitor that and make sure that happens. That's about all that a critical area track does. Conservation easement would be a more complicated thing that, you know, I know there's been some interest in that. And it could apply apply to something other than the critical area and buffers, could apply to some nice pristine data forest. And so I think an interest in doing that, you know, but but it's just, you know, it's not something the city really has the wherewithal to get involved at this point. So conservation easement is probably something that's not necessary in this context. And then the other context is.
Sounds like you're saying too that.
Can I just say, just about unfortunate this area? Sometimes people get hung up on the term conservation easement. I do think that Steve has mentioned that it it doesn't, doesn't matter what what you call it. But if you want to specify that this very clearly, that this property has to be retained in a natural state. And for future development can approach into it. So so don't get hung up on the term conservation easement. But think about what actually Steve alluded to, which is how do we make sure that the language provides and preserves the conservation purpose? So that and and that it runs with the property so that a new purchaser doesn't just see critical area tract, but actually sees language that says this area has to stay in a natural state and 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 the development of the property can further approach into it. So just again, there's a lot of people who aren't up on land use and, you know, they buy property. And, you know, you feel bad for people who think they can do certain things with their property and then they find out that they can't. So better to be clear. But I don't think, I I agree with you. I think the term conservation easement to me, the main thing is language of conservation and natural protection that is actually travels with the property.
You know, I don't mean to digress, but I guess in the back of my mind, I'm thinking about the zoning map. And there we have large tracts of land that are having that the the were under, were too large for the zone, for the zoning map, meaning they potentially could be subdivided. And I remember when I first joined, we were talking about, you know, how do we get with the GMA, how do we increase more housing and and affordable housing? Well, we look at all this land that is subdividable. But when you overlay it with the sub, when you think about critical maps on top of that, you're like, oh, a lot of, right, those are so I see some potential conflict. And in reality, we we, you know, if we do do something like that, then we we kind of offset this other thing that we've got going on, which but anyways, I know this is off topic, but.
But it sounds like what you're saying is that there's two ways to look at the set aside, right? The buffer is it it sounds like it's already part of a county record. And it's just the difference for the property owner of whether or not that that designation has some highly unlikely potential of changing in the future, in which case that I'll bet you're off versus if it's conservation easement. It's a lot harder to untangle. So if if for some reason like worst part said, oh, forget it, you can do anything you want on any type of property anywhere in our town. Having a conservation easement would make that a little more difficult, but it's unlikely that we would get rid of.
But the hybrid is, if as part of the reasonable use exception, you are designating the critical area tract, and then you spell out what that means in terms of conservation and preservation of that critical area.
On the.
The the at the planning director would, and it would be applied onto the title or the deed of the property. So it would be a restriction running with that property. That isn't called a conservation easement, but that would be a way to clarify what a critical, what the critical area tract means.
Is that what she meant, Steve?
I think that's what you could improve on the language.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so that's 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 essentially what, you know, the the we looked at sixteen sixteen one ninety disclosure notice title, that's what it requires. In in some cases, we know, we need to follow, I I think the language is actually pretty good. We just need to make sure it's followed and then the case so that it's very clear to the owner what what they have to do.
Sixteen sixteen.
I don't know, that's in in this.
I I think if you're top of the by, thank you. I I think we don't have to discuss that more if we just want to use it as a follow up to check if you're saying that. But I I'm sorry, I do.
So no, I I just want to say it like, I feel like this discussion would be better if we have a clear example of what's in the code now and what proposed change to it would be. This seems pretty abstract and maybe you guys are more, you don't understand the language than I am, but.
Can I make a recommendation just to keep us on track? That because we don't have that language in front of us, and Steve has acknowledged that language could be improved that for our next meeting, that he bring the existing language and the improved language. And then then we can actually have something in front of us. Is that is that reasonable or do you want to go to a different direction?
No, that that that's fine. But I'm looking at it now and I I don't, I mean, I'll I'll look at it and see if there's suggestions.
And if not, then I could just stick it up.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just trying to get it. What, okay, so are we good to move past this point about conservation easements? Okay, we also talked last time about project size. And I know that Alyssa, you talked about wanting to downsize and not finding smaller spaces and that reasonable. So TJ, to bring you into this, we were talking about footprint limits on a property that's completely encumbered by critical areas. And Nick had said that the hearing examiner determines this and pretty much uses twelve hundred as a minimum. And so we were talking about, does that feel right? Or do we want that explicitly laid out in code that on a property that's completely encumbered? That it could have a footprint size of twelve hundred, or do we want to have, we we want to recommend that the maximum footprint is something? You know, do we want to name, it's not named right now in the code. But it came out of a conversation of what's reasonable. Has anybody spent some time thinking about that? Is that a recommendation or want to make?
I mean, we're talking.
So we.
Foundation side.
The conversation that came up is that in nearly every case, somebody's going up two to three levels. So that's become, it could be a twenty four to thirty six hundreds worth of house.
That's so perfect with some element of driveway or.
I don't know.
Just building.
But that's different for every, you know, how far back they have to go to look at the place that they've been building. So it's really just a footprint of the billable area.
Not the garage.
Yeah, well, the garage has to fit in there.
So what if somebody wanted to build an eight hundred square foot footprint? Okay, so right now it doesn't name it. The the question again for us after the last meeting was currently our code doesn't designate a minimum or maximum footprint, you know, on a and the hearing, it's left to the staff and the hearing examiner. And there was just, there were a few people that commented that twelve hundred felt like a lot. And if we don't feel that way now, and we are happy to leave it as it is, then we can move on to the next.
Why can't we present the last side?
I totally agree.
I mean, if they what's our smallest block, seventy five hundred, sixteen two hundred?
Well, that's the way zoning works, right? Seventy two hundred. The difference here is that at this point, we don't know how much that lot is completely encumbered by critical areas that just don't ring themselves to, you know, develop them at all. You know, theoretically, this this applies to a lot that's completely underwater. And and so for the minimum, maybe, you know, you could build a dock that property and pitch a tent on that dock.
I'm a little late.
So.
We got about fifteen thousand square feet.
Yeah, good luck with that. You're already taking care of that. But but that's that's why there there isn't a minimum. It's just that, you know, typically, there's, you know, there's an average for everything. So it's just worked out that way that they they range from a thousand to twelve hundred, what's been approved by the by the hearing examiner. And but but his criteria are just, you know, what is the minimum necessary to to have reasonable use of this lot? If that's what he's got to find, right? There's no other economic use with less impact than whatever the applicant's proposing. And so that's why, you know, they they're always interested in hearing what the hearing examiners approve. But it doesn't mean they're necessarily going to get it if it turns out that, oh, really, you know, there's only like seven hundred square feet that can be safely built upon. Because when that creek rises, that footprint, you know, anything bigger is going to be in, you know, the hundred year, the five hundred year, you know, floodplain.
But who's been built a standard house on regular strip and pad puddings in a flood area anyway, to get a little brand?
So back to kind of your question, my my reaction is that when you specify a number, it's set like it's kind of removing judgment to a certain level that you're kind of setting an expectation. Most of these lots, as I understand them, are this way because they are really weird and awkward. And I don't think it tends to work very well to have specifics in kind of cases that have lots of individual individuality. And so in this case, I think leaving it to the guiding principles that are already there for reasonable use, which is this the minimum that allows reasonable use is the way to go without us trying to foresee and get involved. So I I like not having a number there so that there there isn't, you know, like the same, well, you guys said it could be eleven hundred square feet, when really only seven hundred square feet makes sense for the lot, right? That to me gives a lot more leverage to get to eleven hundred square.
And we may just not have had an example of that. I think what Nick, when you said that the hearing examiner usually doesn't go below twelve hundred square feet, that also, I would assume suggests that there is not going to be a project where less than twelve hundred was more appropriate.
Yeah, I don't I don't recall like at the project level, but I I think it's it's twelve hundred is probably the max that we see. So maybe a little.
Maximum.
Yeah, right.
Uh, does anybody want to make a recommendation that this is different than it is today?
So I'm trying to remember like last month when we talked about this, there was somebody who was asking for a larger than that, right? For print, and that's why this topic came up.
Uh, no, there was that twelve hundred. My recollection is there was a conversation, I think that we were talking about footprint and council member Bodie had also talked about, you know, we had talked about the fact that the houses are multiple levels. It's still a substantial house on it. So I think we were looking at, should we should we have, should we dictate, to to TJ's point, should we dictate that the maximum footprint should be twelve hundred or a thousand or whatever, because right now the hearing examiner's deciding that. And so that's what the conversation was, is should that be dictated or should we still leave them with the staff?
Okay, I thought that maybe there was, um, one of the R U Vs, somebody was asking for a larger than that because they felt like they couldn't build. Okay, all right, but. Can we, well, can I suggest maybe I I like, because land is, part of the the land is is it serves to be a drainage reservoir for properties for drains water, but could it be a maximum percentage, which of course is less than what we would normally allow? But just have some sort of percentage according to the size of the lot that is being developed. But also a maximum percentage, but contingent upon, you know, again, this whole mitigation process. So if it is in a flood zone or if it is a steep slope, you know, these constraints might further, you know, minimize that for so some sort of language that says you can have a percentage, but reflective of lot size.
Yeah, you you could, just in response to Loz's question, you could do something like that, but you've got sort of a, you know, a scale right there. There's no other economic use that less impact on critical area number two. And then before, any alteration is the minimum necessary to allow reasonable use. So he's weighing all that, but here he's in like, he right.
Right.
Uh, and and so and these criteria are ending up with something that's sort of predictable to us staff, what he's going to say.
Right.
So that there there still could be a case where somebody has a huge piece of property that we we're not thinking of. And, you know, that and and some of it's in steep slope. It's the, there's a wet runway off here, a hundred feet from that steep slope. But but the steep slope is, you know, it's very stable. And 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 maybe they could make the case with hearing examiner, for some reason, this is this is, you know, a reasonable thing to do. So by giving him that flexibility, you avoid the city getting pulled into some lawsuit down the road because no, no, twelve hundred feet, that's it. That's all we've ever done.
Yeah, I feel that, that, yeah, that's.
And it may be that the two thousand, it's okay, because he's only built one story. They're they're they have some access, you know, accessibility issues and 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 so you just, you just don't know what what's going to come into play.
Right, but if it, but I think it gives the the hearing examiner, again, look, because each lot is so different and you can't, you know, if you say, okay, we can we can, we ultimately want the land to be able to do what it wants to do, which is to to provide that drainage, to provide that, you know, if there, you know, if it is a steep slope, not the best place to put something that the hearing, we want the hearing examiner to be able to have that flexibility to say, hey, with a steep slope buffer. So ideally, you could build a percentage of these these R U V laws.
So Loz, my take on this, or my thinking on it is that this will do, trying to specify it more specifically, will not change the hearing examiners thinking very much on what constitutes a reasonable use. But it will allow people to make an argument, to build bigger structures much more effectively. I I really think that's the way it will end up playing out, that when you, somebody sits down and goes through and thinks, well, what can I build? They see we can build a certain percentage on this and that, and it starts to get complicated with everything. A lot of that, of those details begin to get lost in the merk, and it allows, you know, arguments to be made that we can build on, you know, ten percent of something, which is twenty three hundred square feet, which would kind of push against many of these other things that I think are already in there. And so I think we're better of making the applicant demonstrate that those have been met without any specifics try that are going to be very hard to apply to individual lots that are already this encumbered and awkward. I think you're suggesting it makes a lot of sense when you have like very normal plots and sizes. I think once you start getting these multiple layers of complexities, trying to put language like that actually aids more development.
And then what 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 figure are you going to pick? What are you basing that upon? What's your rationale for that ten percent or whatever? I I think, you know, the city attorney is is gonna be really uncomfortable. We put a number in there, we don't have even super, you know, justified rationale for that number. It's just, is it really worth the the work to justify it?
No problem. I I just wanted to, I I guess my understanding from this discussion was that it was, it was at about twelve hundred. But it seems to me twelve hundred, even twelve hundred on a two thousand five hundred square foot lot, you know, so it's yeah, it just seems like if it was a percentage to the lot, then we can, you know, control kind of the size of the because ultimately, it's the impervious surface that we're worried about. I think that.
Most of these lots, they're they're twenty, thirty thousand square feet, just most of them are off in the wilderness. And there's this one, you know, the Gary cases, it's kind of the exception. Also, they're big lots with just a little bit area that everybody agrees, okay, you can do it right here. And so as soon as you put ten percent on that now, you know, that that was a twenty thousand square foot, now it's two thousand. Uh, that they.
Yeah, I see that too.
So just, you know, the the hard number, it's, you know, it sounds good in some cases, but ultimately, we'll probably come back to bite you because we haven't thought about this case, we're going to get ten million now.
No, I can see that.
I would throw my hat. I like what TJ can say, but. Changing my initial plan.
You know, yeah, because I think the spirit of this, I think we're all in agreement. I mean, first, R U Vs are not, I mean, I think they're only sixteen applicant application, I can't remember, you have just a handful of applications, so it's not like.
It's like one, one page.
And I I think the intent of the group is to really try to safeguard, you know, if if you are developing these laws, like how do we make it so that it is, you know, the the least impacting possible without, you know, adding the burden of monitoring the cost, so. But, um, no, I really appreciate this discussion.
Yeah, no, I think it's helpful and 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 it and that was our whole purpose when we took this up in in January, right, is that, you know, we've heard from a community member, we've heard from the storage foundation that this was an area of concern, was there anything that we could do to make it better? And I think when we have these discussions, we can confidently say that this works for these reasons. Here are the risks, you know, you know, going in a different direction, so I think it's productive. Okay, so are we in general agreement that this part of our R U V code is working for us, the uh, leaving it to staff in the hearings?
Yeah.
Excellent. Let's move on then. Um, uh, we also had the, and I think this was I don't know if this was outlined yet, uh, we talked about having the R U V as part of the deed of the property. Is this related at all to the language about the buffer area or where does this land? In terms of.
Well, you you got a, um, I think in response to that discussion, I I missed some of them, but the uh, the new I provision I, uh, in your draft here is, um, addressing the idea that hearing examiners such as granting the exceptions of reported against the real property and the subject decision of of real property, the subject that is the subject of the decision. I think there's some wording issues.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, in addition to what the code says, you do this and this about regarding your, uh, saying what the restrictions are, and that's a critical areas gone. Your new provision saying, actually, when they do the title report, they're going to get this whole, a whole decision, you've seen, you know, fifteen, twenty.
That it's under a monitor.
It's got the conditions at the end of it, yeah, right.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think that.
That doesn't currently exist. So right now, when they did the title report, that's not showing up.
They're just going to see, though, this has got a critical track.
All the other information, so.
Title search stuff, so it's done.
Yeah.
Actified. Yeah, I mean, it's all part of you, you go and you're working, you're buying property, you're paying for title search.
Signing nineteen.
Yeah, yeah, I I I personally, I just wish there was some way that real estate agents could put this up front to people and and people would know what they're buying.
Would it show me your property in private? So when you list a house, you want to proactively resist the title on any issues of commitment to a real estate agent getting? I know they do that now.
Like it's in a floodplain or something.
Exactly. So you want to put all the supporting documents, and then when the house is closed on the day that you give the key, you have also have the title search.
Yeah, that's like I've already bought it.
But if they got the keys right, we've had, my husband, the real estate agent, and he's had it where it actually didn't have title search. It wasn't in K County, that didn't have clean title search, and so it put a pause on everything. To your point, though, that's way too, I mean, you can't put the two things back.
No, it's it's kind of like, I wish there was a.
But.
People know what they're buying.
To that point, the the people say they don't don't understand what it sounds like, but it's not, is having the full detail on what the what the fire plan is and what the issues are, and you don't, if I buy it, I think that would be very significant, and I know, you know, I remind them, they see this, I would give me some pause before I sign over and just know that I.
Is there, what is the, in the house buying process, there's a a point that there's a a amount of time when you get disclosures on the property before you actually buy it, but I don't know what mechanism it causes that to be in there.
Uh, I mean, it's dependent upon what you agree to, if you have X amount of time based on whatever the contract says to do your research on the house, or if you're going to build, you have a feasibility study. The issue is that sometimes people wait that entire, so then by this process, you you buy, you don't even know what the law can tell.
But that's on the buyer, right, at that point, because the information is there, they do the work.
Yeah.
All right, I I'm okay with that. I don't know how much we can really get involved with there.
We have a, we have a new person who made it to Lakeport Park, and I'll talk to you about it, but she got a little meat started here, but this woman is the doctor, yes, Oliver did, and Google her, she's not in the top ten, the top twenty potential women in the world. She's living up off of all of my Lakeport Park press, so a little great houses. But this house, one point three million, not ever seen because she's the, she's head of the health department for building, he's not on the local health board, so she's trying to charge them. They want to live in Lakeport Park. Their ends is paid about seven hundred thousand dollars of rehab on the house. But this is a perfect lot that you kind of, you're talking about, it's an acre lot, a long retainer acre lot on Lion Creek. Of course, it's not a critical slope in the backyard, but you got a two hundred foot buffer coming out the creek. But by the time you have the house set back and you got the creek coming this way, and they want to build a decat building for her parents to live in. So now you've kind of got this little spot, you know, in here where you can build this house and then remodel this house. Oh, it's kind of iconic, but only iconic California architectural design for a house. Yeah.
Okay, so for section I, are we content with it? I mean, if the wording was fixed, that that means one of the things that we think is an important recommendation we hope to make.
I didn't find I.
It's staggering, it's on the signature page.
Oh, not anything, not.
Just that the hearing examiner's decision, oh, here's Steve's husband on the screen here.
Oh.
What's the pre-workup? Language just lately.
Well, then let's move on. It doesn't sound like we disagree that this should be part of this. All right. Next, the next item. I have one question about, one question about this, should we be explicit that that includes the mitigation plan, the monitoring requirements, et cetera? Should we, should we list what documentation needs to be part of that? Because it could just be the hearing examiner's decision and not any of the supporting documents? I don't know.
Well, um, there there are other provisions, you've also got something saying that that has to be just set aside at month for for that, so, um, you know, I think, I think, you know, you you you've got other protections that are addressing that. But if you, if you put the the monitoring plan, it may be confusing if if it was, you know, ten years from then.
I I mean.
The decision is that, I'm just, it was a question.
The decision, the hearing examiner's decisions, not like one sentence thing, it's a long document, the evidence laid out, this or that.
Question asked and answered.
Sorry, does this drop off in the time after the the monitoring? Do you guys, does anybody know if it just?
No, no, no.
Okay, it's yeah, that forever that, yeah.
Well, that's that's why, I mean, I think it's two separate things, you say, okay, the decision, when you spit out everything, it's in the title report, it comes out. But then on on the actual, um, the the document that the county has, we just want to make sure that the the wording, uh, when they look at that critical area track, uh, that says this, you're not supposed to do this, that, and the other. And so that that's that's a thing that our main takeaway takeaway is just to say, you know, here's here's how this is going to happen. Uh, and if you see a hole in it, we will recommend some language to you to to add to that section, just outside of the section.
Which really helps, like fifteen years from now, there's no monitoring going on, the signs that tell the owner that this is, you know, a buffer, you know, could be gone, and they've decided to build an A D U or D A D U, and they're super confused why they can't. Or or like one of my neighbors dumped a bunch of rock in there. What? Saying the reality is twenty years from now, whoever owns that property that's currently under an R U V, it's no longer being monitored, you know, Steve's retired and you know, they dump a bunch of gravel in there, go, this one was on my D A D U, and it's like, I don't know that we can prevent that, but it's it is a thing. So I think it's nice for it to continue to be on the on the tire. Um, okay, uh, section H, the financial security guarantee, uh, did you all look at, or Steve got it put it up here? Look at this, did this reflect our conversation? Does this reflect our conversation?
I mean, was the thirty percent, that was based on what other cities are giving.
Yeah, it was pretty common.
Oh, labor material is plus thirty.
And I do want to point out that, uh, some of you may not have seen this before our meeting, but Meredith submitted comments and she was not excited about H, but that if we, you know, because of enforcement issues, she could be supportive of it, in other words, if we can't be certain that we're monitoring. What did she say? If there's not a way to alleviate the problem by tightening up the contract, oh. I remember Director Bennett saying that city has very little ability to legally enforce compliance after the fact because of city resources. I also remember that in practice, contract creators are not held accountable for a variety of reasons, they own the property, et cetera. There's no way to alleviate those problems, tightening, you know, tightening up the contract, et cetera, then she's okay with basically section H. I just wanted to share that during this conversation.
We do know if these people don't submit the report every time for the first year, you know, we track it.
Are they put up on the public notices or how, would you have to, like, how can the public see the report?
Just public notice.
If it's turned about a property. Track down the reports.
It popped up on your computer that made.
We received them for that case study that we looked at, the the one on Twenty Eighth Street. I'm sorry, I didn't see those.
That's the one where we figured we had to go with this language, because you've got to change it over.
Right, uh, but I didn't see any of the monitoring reports in the somebody forwarded me, less than made a public record, you've asked them to forward it, and see monitoring requests in there. Yeah, that'd be, so my question to Steve was like, where can we see recourse, like the notices for mitigation or monitoring or violations, you know, when they're, uh, discovered, are put on our land use notification page? I was just wondering if the reports, the annual reports could go to to that, so that people don't have to go through a public records, since it's part of that same a lot of.
A lot of work on the city's part.
To publish the report on the land use?
Or, I mean, for just reasonable use exceptions?
Yeah, yeah. They have, they have to put up the mitigation plans, applications, all of those things, and if that's part of that, I'm thinking of the property on One Seventy Eighth that had had a lot of consternation about, you know, um, that building in the first place.
I don't think it's too much to ask, the people are concerned, they request the mitigation reports. I don't, we'll say those regulations should be up for anybody who can see them, like. Yeah, you can. I think that you're you're asking about a particular property, so we can go look in our files, related up to the property. I think in the case of this one, it's been, uh, you know, sent around, the reports have been sent around the email, so you might have to go the email records just to get some attachments and numerous emails that Nick and I had shared. All right, this is, this is not the 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 records on this because of changing, you know, it's 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 the foster child, what you're doing.
So, uh, completely.
Does it save you work to have it posted? Does it save you work to have it posted?
Does it?
Would it save you work if that information?
No, it would make work, make sure that everybody, you know, that we've got five of these out there.
Because you're constantly having to.
To make sure that that everybody's.
Versus if you bet twenty requests.
Yeah, if we get twenty requests about the same property, that's that's easier. We've got five R U Vs that are still in their monitoring period, we have to make sure that then we have more chance of doing something wrong. Because, oh, we forgot to post the the jealousy.
Okay. I don't like any more. To go back to the question, Meredith's issue about causing a burden financially for the property. I was trying to look back at this R U V that we looked at a while, or the examiner's decision, I was trying to get a better understanding of how much money are we talking? I know it's totally different for every single property and what the mitigation plan is, but I mean, are we talking two thousand dollars, we're talking ninety thousand dollars, I feel like understanding some of the average thresholds could maybe help. Help that.
Do you remember, Nick, how much those last two years, in terms of the monitoring?
Because the overdoing essentially is labor maintenance thirty percent.
For the, for just the the monitoring portion, uh, I think that he was quoted like three grand or something, two.
So, so yeah, the first five years.
That's probably the main ticket items that you're looking at for, right?
Okay, so we're saying maybe four or five thousand plus thirty percent.
I would think you'd be in the ten thousand.
I think we're saying five figures, uh, for for all the reports.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, whatever the cost of all of the the plantings are.
Right.
And then we're saying thirty percent and talk about that, so it could be, you know, it could be a fifty thousand dollar deposit.
Yeah, okay.
This will be a big improvement, and this this really gets to what, um, what we're talking about. Give us some teeth, if they've got money sitting there, they're going to do it.
Yeah. I just, I think about the developers, like, sure, yeah, they're obviously that they're that cash readily available for them. A non-developer.
Well, no, you you can, you can do a bond, it's it's kind of a, you know, a tough thing to get your head around as a private citizen, but, you know, if you're willing to go through this process to develop on this property, you can hire the people that can set up a bond, then then you're just paying like an increment of that two percent every year to maintain that law. As a planning director, I don't like bonds, they're harder to get back, whereas if I'm just named, the city's name on account, I say, I said, hey, you know, Mr. Frank, doesn't that, they didn't do what the senator do and it'll cut us a check. That that's so. If it's too easy to do that, so so, yeah, each each one has its own, um, process of putting costs.
But then I guess to to bring it back to you in this scope, that most other city students, they tap on a financial piece, and it's really getting to the core of what we all determined was an issue. Is that that compliance, that there's no, there's no reason for people to comply because there's no financial.
Okay, so, I think that takes us to the end of our list. Uh, this was David's talking about funds. We had a short discussion here at the end about fines, but I think that Steve, you provided some code language.
Now, you two, your your first few questions were addressing what, you know, the response, um, I would your second question, and apparently I suppose to sign a paper agreement that'll be fine to the full extent of what legally allowed first score, then as far as ways, um, and and so that's, it kind of runs, uh, counter to the way our our code enforcement. And, and so that's, it kind of runs counter to the way our, our code enforcement section is set up. It's something to be adopted that long ago, five or six years ago, because we didn't have the rules in place that make sure everybody who gets cited for code enforcement, you know, knows what their rights are. And so that's why council adopted this, that the first step is always, when the city determines a violation has occurred, officer, code enforcement officer should make an attempt to secure a voluntary correction of the violation. Attempting to contact the person, find a violation, request correction. So, um, you know, unless it's like a life safety issue, like, you know, they're, they don't have, you know, part of their second floor, it's gonna seem there's no guardrail. We're, we're gonna try and do this, this voluntary correction. You know, you, you've mowed down some of these plants that specifically are planted as part of the mitigation. Get somebody out there to replant them and have your biologists confirm the best of the appropriate thing. And if they will agree to that in writing, then we give them a certain, certain amount of time to do it, if they don't do it. Usually we have, you know, more lines that you forfeit your right to hearing, you forfeit, and you're gonna be subject to fines and you, that's all part of this voluntary correction. Which works pretty well. They may need to move right into fines if they're gonna be doing it. You need to. And, and so, you know, we, we can't determine what the penalties are gonna be till we've gone through that process. If they've shown willingness to, to work with us, you know, that also plays into it, because as soon as we find them, they can appeal to the hearings and say, this is agreed, you know, I, I was doing, so, so when the hearing examiner's got to sort out, okay, so we're reaching there and so we have to go through this process. So as soon as we, they want to find, we're opening ourselves up to attorney fees. Your examiner's not free, charges to come and deal with the case. Uh, and so, so the, the incentive for the city administration is to resolve these things without, you know, going to, to fines. There are cases where we go right, somebody goes down a significant tree, a risk goes out, says this is what the tree is worth. And we will, you know, our voluntary correction will be, all right, you know, in the past, we have, if you want to just pay this, this fine, last time it was, it was twenty thousand dollars. And we said, look, you'll pay ten thousand, ten thousand one dollars of the fifty percent of this. Uh, we will, you know, consider the case closed. But they wanted to contest it, so they, that's, that's, that was the value of the tree by this formula that Arvers used, twenty thousand dollar tree. They contested it to the hearings, the hearings there said, no, um, I don't, you know, you want a strong case here, whatever excuses were, why you shouldn't have to pay the, the, the ten thousand dollars. And actually, we're gonna charge them, so no, the twenty thousand dollars. So we put them on the stall and bypassed them in a year.
Right. But it's, I mean, help me to know, because I think that all seems sensible, right? Like, you know, this voluntary mitigation, but I was really perplexed on the second case study that, that we looked at for that property on twenty eighth street, where the, the property owner who built that house was very well aware of the fact that there were some strict rules about building and existing on that site that already agreed to, you know, mitigation plan and, and done everything to get their strategic occupancy and inhabit the property. And then they clear cut part of their slope, which at that point, they would totally know that's against the rules. And, and then how, how do you decide not to charge them a fine? On top of requiring them to, you know, mitigate that component. And that, that's the part I'm confused about is it seems like that should be a deterrent. And that's where the conversation was at the end of our last meeting is that David chimed in and sort of Walter saying, you know, it's that there is some concern that there are, there may be instances where a fine is perfectly appropriate because the person will fully do it. So that they should have to pay a fine and mitigate the impact.
So they should, they should. What I was trying to explain is that the, the city is going to incur more costs, much more usually than the time you charge. In that kind of case, they can charge two hundred and fifty dollars for the first day and a hundred and twenty five dollars every day after that. So it takes a long time of them not complying to actually cover the costs that we're gonna have to, they're, they're gonna ask for mitigation there with the hearing standard. We have to, I mean, I'm just telling you what the incentives are for us as administrative personnel.
But why did we pursue the twenty thousand dollars significant tree? But we didn't pursue that. Like, to me, it's not.
Because the finer had been much more.
So, my question here is, and then I understand this conversation, I'm not sure how it flies to code.
Yeah, that's where we got to. It's just, it was a reminder of that conversation. It's, it's a different part of it. And so that's where we ended it last time too. Uh, but it just comes back down to the enforcement side of the, of the, of R U Vs, you know, are, are like, you know, do we have the reporting, like, are, you know, are we current with all of our reporting? Are we current with all of our monitoring of these properties? And what assurances do we have that, you know, the, the hard work that was done by the property owner, by the staff here, the hearing examiner actually comes to fruition versus just getting lost in, you know, staffing or rules issues.
Yeah, the key to, um, what you're getting at is, is staffing. So city has never, uh, wanted to, you know, add a full-time code enforcement. So it's left to, you know, four or five people that already have full-time jobs to like, you know, tag team on code enforcement. Three of us planners, plus our risk, plus the building official. And so, you know, the cities have the opportunity or the residents have the opportunity to dump other plans to increase the funding for city staff and, 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 and there's not an interest in it. So we will continue to have these conversations about, you know, what, you know, why are we following up on this and that? But they even said, because we're totally lost.
So maybe one of the recommendations that we should consider that comes up maybe in the memo that goes along with those is, is one of our big recommendations for adequate enforcement of R U Vs and other critical code and, you know, just to back you up, Steve, just, we need important code enforcement, generally speaking, not just for R U Vs, but for other. I don't know, how does that sound to you, Ira? I mean, that might be the solution. It's not making a policy recommendation, but making a recommendation to solve this underlying issue that Steve's outlined, which is I think that might be a way to bring this part of the discussion to closure.
On the favor then.
I have a question about the daily fine. How did that number come to be, like two hundred and fifty dollars per day?
Um, it's kind of based on what cities generally find people. And, and so that, that's what got established in the regulations. We had a code update recommended by our city attorneys, they're saying they go together. One of their attorneys have worked in a lot of big settings, but they have dealt with a lot of top code enforcement issues. And so that was the recommendation that council decided to adopt. Because first, you know, it either drops down after the first day or it goes up after the first day. Rip out of performance. Where everybody else, you don't stand the risk of.
Well, and again, this, that is beyond the scope of this project. If we wanted to make a recommendation that we examine or that somebody examines that we could recommend that, right? I mean, just to not lose sight of what we're doing here, which is simply to make recommendations. And if we believe that, you know, that part of our city's policy, you know, needs reading by somebody, we can always suggest that. We don't have to solve that. It's all I wanna, just kind of let us off with a, for that. So again, that would probably be more minimal content. The good news is, is as we approach the end of our meeting, it feels like through our various meetings, we've turned this upside down and inside out. We've all had an opportunity to ask any question we wanted. I think in advance that maybe to a fault. But I think what we, where we've arrived upon review of our current code is that there are really two key ways that we could make improvements. Um, and that's section H and section I. So I feel like if, if staff can sort of take a look at sort of where we're at with that, I think we added one thing relative to, um, the language having to do with buffer tracks. We talked about maybe or maybe not that language to be improved, but those are the kind of the three things if we could look at those next meetings, that potentially we could be ready to bring this to closure.
Okay, so yeah, what I heard was, looking at whether, um, the section one ninety I was talking about.
Yeah.
Could be improved sixteen, sixteen, one ninety. Um, and then there's a few wording issues with some of the, like Meredith was pointing out that maybe there's a better way to, to write that. Do number five. I could, I could show you an underline strike to what she suggested.
Yeah.
It seemed like a, a good change. And, um, and then we, the, um, we also know that there is word problems with, uh, the, the vision I, I believe was, or yeah, the last provision, evil, um, words. Those are the changes I heard, actually, related to the code.
Oh, but not for, that's the change.
I didn't know if it's to me, that's to me, right?
Maybe like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that means that then the only other thing, if we want to be proactive about it, is either you or I could draft the middle of the goals with it. And if everything's in order next time, we could button it up and zip it out the door. It seems like there's been the child guys. Yeah, gee, I mean, does that feel doable? To sign this. Finished. Uh, okay, I think that's great. I feel like we chewed on this and thank you for being patient with all of the, like, that's just sort of a writing it. How these policies work. But I, I felt good about what we talked about. I mean, anybody else feel okay? There's any heartburn, we bring that we should be aware of? Okay, well then I'm gonna move us through the agenda, the rest of the agenda, if that's okay. Your business, I don't think there's any.
No. So can I just ask?
Yeah.
If we wrap this up next week, what is next up?
That's something that Stephen and I'll have to talk about. We'll go back to our work plan and look at where we're ready to move on to next topics. We've been, we have a few items on that list that we'll just evaluate whether, whether we can get started, but what we're waiting for is the call plan.
Right, that's.
Waiting for what?
Regardless of whatever else we start, I'd like to start talking about the school.
Yeah.
Can I ask, do we have any other commissioners that are timing now?
Not until, yeah, not until February.
Oh, no, do I, do I tie?
I mean.
This was a question I had.
Yeah, technically speaking, we all can serve a maximum of two consecutive terms. And you and I will look at that in February, I'll hit it the fall of February and then. But yeah, that's a great point. So probably, I mean, we can, there's nothing stopping us from getting the word out.
Well, so on this point, I am up in February and may well need to leave earlier. Cause they're going to, if that happens, I wouldn't be here November, December, January and potentially February. So it doesn't make much sense. So I don't know a hundred percent for sure yet, but it's.
Would we potentially bring somebody on then early? Like if, if T J effectively resigns?
We need to do this, because it's too logical for me to come back and then, right? I wanna resign now to aid your improvement process. We could do that. We have moved to additional.
I saw the other. Yeah. Okay, so we report some announcements, anything from staff?
Well, we're sorry to report that, um, um, Cameron has decided to leave the city and going back to Southern California. Seems like we need to post the family. So, um, so we've lost them. We do have, um, a good group of candidates that we're looking at. Probably start interviewing next week. Some folks that, uh, have, who have local experience, it's always a good sign in terms of longevity. So hopefully get that, uh, that position filled in the next.
When did he?
His last day was Friday. So it's tough to, you know, it's a tough position, uh, because you're like the first person, everybody goes to, there's a fine question. And traditionally it has been tree board, uh, support as well. So there's a lot to cover. We gotta work on that. Make position, uh, you know, as more management.
Did, does anybody else have announcements? Okay, uh, then do we have any, um, do we have any participants that are meeting tonight?
No, still just me and me.
I wasn't sure. Okay, um, so Stephen and I, we're gonna adjourn for the next meeting, but we'll start with the closure of R U Vs and then talk about what and if there's nothing else, I would be glad to take a motion and give you guys back, you know, ten minutes, eight minutes of your life. Discussion, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Close.
It's great, you're all here in person.
Yeah.
Well, we don't know.